Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 10, 2019, here in the City Council chambers. Tonight, we're going to begin by having a moment of silence in memory of the 3,000-plus Americans that perished in the attack on this country 18 years ago yesterday. So if we can rise and have that moment, then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Don Holtz. Thank you, and I, geez, I apologize for misspeaking. It's tomorrow is the anniversary. Apparently, I said yesterday. All right, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz?
Here.
Commissioner Hing?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hockes?
Here.
Chairman Redholtz?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes for our regular meeting of August 27, 2019. Any commissioners have any changes to those minutes? Nope, so those minutes are approved as presented. Next is oral communications. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the Commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the Commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters on the agenda will be addressed when that item is under consideration. I have no oral communication cards as anyone wished to address the Commission on a non-agenda item. Seeing none, we shall move on to item number two, which is our public hearing, scheduled for tonight. A categorical exemption. You know what? I need more info on that. Wait a minute. Thank you. It's administrative use permit number 19-18. The applicant is Edward Hu at 1152 East Walnut Creek Parkway. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting the staff report?
Our planning assistant, Renee Aguilar, will be presenting the report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, fellow Planning Commissioners and members of the public. Tonight, I will be presenting administrative use permit number 19-18. The applicant is requesting to construct a second-story addition to the existing single-story single-family residence. The proposed floor area of the house is 2,893 square feet. The addition includes a 505-square-foot two-car garage, a 466-square-foot addition to the first floor, a 425-square-foot second-story addition, and a 24-square-foot front porch. Behind me is an aerial map. I've identified the property with a star, as you can see, and I've also identified major streets behind me. I have Walnut Creek Parkway, Felinda Avenue, and Glendora Avenue for a reference. The proposal of the second story requires an administrative use permit and a subcommittee design review. And the project was reviewed by the Design Subcommittee Review Board on August 13th and was forwarded to the Planning Commission for further review. The Planning Division did notice 49 occupants, owners and occupants, and the property is located in a surrounding neighborhood with single-family residential on the north, south, east, and west. And lastly, the project is categorically exempt through Class III new construction or conversion of small structures. The existing house is 1,497 square feet. It is a single-story with three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The photo on the left is the front of the house, visible from the street, and then the photo to the right is the backyard. Here is the site plan behind me. Now, this is the existing floor plan. As I said, there are three existing bedrooms, an existing family room, and an existing kitchen, and they are proposing to demolish the carport. On the new proposed floor, they are proposing a new home office, a new master bedroom, a new great room, and a kitchen extension, and the two-car garage. The second floor consists of a new master bedroom and a bathroom, and that addition is 425 square feet. Just to give you an idea, that's a typical size of a two-car garage. This is the front elevation, the east elevation, the west elevation, and the south elevation. Now, just a neighborhood survey. We did survey 21 homes within the area, and we found that the mean lot size in the area was 7,938 square feet, and the floor area ratio was 20 percent. For the subject proposal, the floor area ratio is 31 percent. Therefore, the house as proposed would be 1.7 times larger than the average size of the surrounding surveyed homes. Again, we did survey 21 homes within that area. And if you look to the left, you can also see some renderings that the applicant provided with some color, just to give you a better illustration of what the house would look In summary, the existing house, again, is 1,497 square feet. Proposals for, on the first floor, would be 2,468. As you can see, that would be including the garage. Second floor, 425 square feet, and then the floor area ratio being 31 percent with a lot coverage of 32 percent, which is under our maximum allowed of 35 percent. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving administrative use permit number 19-18 and subcommittee design review number 19-30. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant, Edward, is here for any follow-up questions as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Renee. Any questions of staff? No? All right.
Did we have any neighbors send any emails or letters in or anything in favor?
I did not receive a phone call nor an email. Nothing. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the public testimony on this item. Mr., is it Hu or Hugh? Hu?
Hu.
Sir, come on up and tell us what you want here, okay?
Can I?
No, no, no. You've got to come up to the microphone. You're going to be on national television, sir.
All right. Okay, so today is the first time I attend a, like, a public hearing. So, wow, I didn't know. Oh, okay. Anyway, so the house is belong to my mom, my family. So, but unfortunately, my mother, so, passed away, got ovarian cancer. So, and also, I'm her son, and also, I'm an architect. That's why, just now, everybody see the house condition is so poor. And now, my family is thinking, okay, now is the good time to, you know, do the home improvement. But today, the first time I come here, I didn't realize, oh, there's a PowerPoint I can present. Otherwise, I would like to present, because I used to live in here long time ago. Yeah, that's why I make the design and try to make, like, improvement, and also, I thinking, maybe I can be the one encourage the neighbor to remodel their home. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yep. And also, you know, I already spoke to my neighbor, Don, and Sasha. Yeah, they like it. So far, they say, oh, Edward, finally, you're going to improve your home. Okay, of course. Yeah, that's why I make the design, and I thank you, Renee. He's really nice guy and give me a lot of suggestion, and that's why I present my design today.
So, you designed the, you designed the home yourself?
Yeah, I'm an architect.
Oh, okay. Makes sense. Good.
Yeah.
Good. And you live there, how long have you lived there in the?
Since 1995.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why, actually, West Covina is my, like, hometown now.
Yeah. Very good.
Yeah.
Any questions? Mr. Kennedy, turn on.
So, you've lived there since 95? You've lived there since 1995 at that residence?
Yes, I immigrant to the U.S. since 1995.
Okay, how many, how many, how many people in your family?
Okay, so I have brother, I have two brother, one sister.
Do they live there too?
Yeah, but, you know, unfortunately, my mom passed away, so based on my mom, we're, the house is going to keep my brother. And my brother hired me as a designer to design the whole house. Yeah, but I'm living West Covina. Are you asking?
No, I'm just asking how many members you have in your family that actually live there?
So far?
Yeah, I mean, what do you got, two, three, five? How many you have in your family?
Okay, so later, after?
That live there.
Live there right now?
Yeah, live there right now.
No, nobody living here?
Nobody live there.
But I got two roommate living here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr., one question. Is it your intent, when this is done, to reside in the residence? Or are you going to, you know, rent it out or sell it?
Oh, no, no. My, my family, my brother and sister, they're going to move in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why we spend, we willing to spend at least, maybe roughly around $160,000. We're going to build our custom home, and then my brothers, they're going to move in here, and then we can, yeah.
Mr. Hu?
Yep.
I know you said something about you talked to a couple of people. I don't know who they are. Are they your neighbors?
Yeah, neighbors.
Where?
At the next one.
Next, on each?
My two next side.
Each side?
Yeah, each side.
Did you talk to anybody else?
I tried to spoke, talk to the other neighbor, but I saw, like, a U-Haul truck, some, maybe they are moving something or?
What about across the street?
Across the street, no, I didn't. But I send the radius mail, yeah.
Okay.
But of course, Sasha and Don, we always say hello together, so, yeah. Even we?
You said your sister and brother are planning to move in there once it's done?
Yeah.
Do they have family?
Yeah, I have family.
No, do they have family?
Oh, yeah, they have the family.
How many people in their family?
And two children, and my brother and his wife.
That's it?
Total four.
And you?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm living very close to this house. You know, because my, my parent body's house, maybe around, like, 1981. Yeah, that's why we have family living in West Covina for a long time.
No, we're just trying to ascertain how many people will be living in that house once it's completed.
At least four. At least four person.
Including children?
Yeah, including children.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the gentlemen? No? All right. Mr. Hu, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards on this item. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of this project? Nope. Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Same amount? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion, and we will have Commission discussion. Who would like to go first? Staff have anything to add on this, or? No? Okay.
Don wants to go.
Don, all right. Commissioner Holtz?
It's a nice, nice architectural design and view, and I think it'll be great there. I'm only concerned how some of the rest of the neighbors are going to take it when they see this nice house, and they've got real small houses. But I hope you're right. I hope maybe they'll take a clue and maybe do some of the same and improve the neighborhood, because some of those houses have been there a long time, and they really need to be rejuvenated. So, I wish you good luck, and I'll vote in favor of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. Commissioner Hing? Yeah?
Yeah, I think it's a nice project. That area in particular, it's been a one-story. It's built very low profile with very low roof, and also, at times, you can see that they put AC on top of it. So, not this one, just that, that particular, you know, general area. So, I think it would be a nice additions that he's building it with the proper pitch roof that will hopefully take care of all the AC and the ducts and all that inside. So, I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Commissioner Kennedy?
So, as you know, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of two-story houses. I know if I was living next door, I went once, somebody looking in my backyard, but nobody came out, none of the neighbors came out, so I assume they're okay with it. I went, I, I've been to that house, actually. I went to a party there when I was in high school. That's all. That's what happens when you live in the city your whole life, you know? You end up going to everybody's house eventually. And it, you know, it had that, it had that carport back then, so they, they had made the garage into a living room back in the 70s. So, anyway, since it, it is nice, I, I see the one neighbors are not going to have any windows. You have the wash behind you, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. However, it's, it's your neighbors to your right. You know, and since they're not here, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and just, I'm for it.
Oh, she, did you want to speak? Oh, come on.
She just walked in about a couple of minutes ago.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Are you in for or against?
I am undecided.
All right, well, go ahead and speak.
I like it, I don't like it.
Go ahead and speak. We'll let you know what side you're on, okay?
So, I'm on that side, on the right side. So, the only concern I have, of course, is privacy, and it's hard for me. He showed me, he was very nice coming to me and showing me all, and I don't understand them. So, I really need, like, an idea of what it's going to really look into, into my backyard. I mean, how much of my backyard is going to be exposed? I have a niece who likes to, you know, go back there and sunbathe, so I really want to press the importance of that to me personally. Also, I'm wondering if, you know, there's going to be landscaping in this project or not, because the landscaping in the front is really bad, so I would love to see some, I don't know, requirements, I guess, about that. Also, I was wondering in the backyard if indeed there's going to be privacy issue, like, he's going to be able to, you know, somebody's going to be able to look in the backyard? If there wouldn't be a possibility of putting a hedge or a tree or something that would block that? That's all, you know, I don't want to prevent him from doing what he needs to do to his property, because I think it looks beautiful, but those are my two concerns, so I don't know how you guys can address them, but that's my point.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What if he put the windows up higher, so he can't look into your backyard?
Say that again?
What about if he put the windows higher? So, so if you walk into the room, you have, you have, you still have light, but you're not looking into your backyard?
Oh.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, as long as he doesn't see what mag, you know, is going on in my backyard.
You don't have to explain, you know, I mean, I, I got, I would want my privacy too.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't want him to, prevent him from doing what he needs to do for himself and his family, but if we can protect that somehow, whether it's a tree or, you know, higher, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And before you go, can you fill out a card for us? So, we can make that part of the minutes? Yeah, you're going to come up in a second, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? Okay. Mr. Hu, why don't you come forward, please? Yes, since she brought up some items that she has concerns with, this is your opportunity to address those concerns.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Hey, Sasha, I have solution for you, okay? Okay, so if you see the, Renee, can you put the satellite map? Yeah. Okay, so, the backyard, we, we can plant like a tree and just block the view. I think that's the, the reasonable idea I can provide, because the window, actually, if you, if you look at my floor plan, the master bedroom, I tried to design just very front. So, even, even you see the red house, real house, there's not any second-floor addition, just only health in the front. That's why you see the, the corner, there's a window, because this is a master bedroom, we still want to have nice view, you know? But honestly, you know, the, from the window to the property line has 25 feet, really far. So, I already thinking, okay, if Sasha concerned about the backyard privacy, the best thing, just plant a tree. Yeah, so we're going to do the, like, a nice landscaping, you know? Yeah. I think that's a easy way to make everybody happy, yeah.
Okay.
Non-shedding. Non-shedding.
Non-shedding tree. Thank you. Any commissioners have any other?
Ask them. Well, I?
You want to come back? Commissioner Hockes, or? Go ahead, Dan.
I still feel that we should change out the windows, put them higher. I, I'm, tree or no tree, you know, someday, the day's going to come where she's going to, the house is going to move on to somebody else, and, and what about them? I'm, I'm good with making the window higher, and I'm okay with it. I don't want it, the tree's not going to, it ain't going to fly with me.
So, this is the west elevation here, and you can see that there are three windows on the upper floor. Now, the front window is actually like a atrium window, it looks like. It's not even, and it also says it's tempered glass or something. So, those ones, those two skinny windows can be easily changed to be clear story or some kind of other small window. We could also make them non-openable, so they can't open, you know, or, or, there's different ways to do that. So, if you're comfortable with just a clear story, we can do that.
No, I, I.
And then, and then, let me, and then, the one in the back. Now, go to the south elevation. So, the south elevation is the bedroom window, right? That's the egress window, I believe. So, Edward's saying yes. So, that, that has to be there, but if you go back to the west elevation, it has a large window on the back, that one could also be changed. So, theoretically, if the Planning Commission so desires, you could condition all those windows on that elevation to be clear story.
We all understand that and good with that? Commissioner Hing?
I actually like the addition of trees. It not only makes the neighborhood looks nicer, but it's also green. There are hedges that you can plant that can grow up to 20 feet tall, especially he has a large, like, there's a huge distance. He mentioned it's 25 feet. So, there's plenty of room for him to grow hedges. Not only that, it add additions of value to the whole neighborhood, you know, it's a nice green hedge that I think would really add, you know, and, and it would really look nice. And with the tree, if you do that, you also want the rooms to look, you know, with natural lights, so that we have energy-efficient house as well. You don't want to make the room looks really dark and at the same time, keep turning on the light all the time. So, that's not, you know, after all, by year, I don't know, Jeff, you probably know the answer, 20, 30 or so, we have to have certain energy-efficient home. So, that's something that we also need to look into as well. So, I think the hedges, to me, look really nice if he can, you know, I've been looking at plans or had project that they actually have hedges that are, you know, nicely green year-round. It can grow up to 20 feet tall or so, so that really give it a good blocking, because we cannot, obviously, remove all the windows. So, either way, they'll find a ways to look somewhere if they truly look. I mean, I have two-story home, I, to my audience, to be honest, I just don't really look outside that much. I mean, you're busy with your own home, you're busy with your own thing, so I don't really stand there and looking outside all the time. But I think the hedges would really add a really nice addition to the neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Hu, come on back up one more time, so we can just make sure we're all on the same page here. Are you, are you good with what Commissioner Hing was saying and what the, what we're asking you to do on this?
Honestly, you know, because the room, I tried to make the property line 25 feet far away, and, yeah, that's really far. So, if without the window, wow, this is master bedroom, right? Without them, because, you know, the house why has a value? Because if you, if you see the satellite map, we have the deep, like, backyard, and also, there's a creek. So, when the master bedroom has the window, see the, the view, can increase our home value. I, I agree with you, because we, we are good neighbor, we are not watching, like, secretly. So, even we can secretly watch each other, right? Don't think, you know, privacy cannot unlimit, right? Because backyard is backyard, sometimes we can say hello, so, yeah. It, it, just now, I spoke to Sasha, we can plant a tree, you know? Yeah, even the tree can grow like 25 feet. Yeah, I think it's easy.
Yeah. Okay, so, go ahead, Commissioner Hockes.
The trees are a nice idea. However, it's, there's, there's no real, you know, like, structural guarantee that the trees are going to provide the, the visual screening, you know, that we're trying to achieve here. And it also doesn't, you know, guarantee that it's going to, you know, preserve the privacy to the neighboring property, no matter who's living there some years from now, you know? Ownership's going to change. And the one thing that, you know, gives a little bit more assuredness in my mind of, you know, preserving privacy off that, you know, that, that west elevation is, you know, to raise the, the windows higher. And, and as long as, you know, wherever you see that, you know, there's an egress window already provided, I think the, the idea of the tree is nice, but I don't think it's something that is worth conditioning as part of this. That would be your choice if you want to do that on your own, but I think the one thing that we should probably, the one thing that we should, you know, condition is, you know, get the window height higher. And if you want to, you know, think about doing any other kind of screening on your own, that, that would be up to you.
Okay, so clear-story windows on the west elevation. We're all, we're all, is there agreement on that up here?
What about some kind of opaque glass or something that would, could go in there and let light in and everything, but you wouldn't really be able to see out, you know, real clear?
Well, that is another option. You, do some kind of opaque or translucent glass. You'd want to, my, my opinion on that is you'd want to make it non-openable. Otherwise, it doesn't, because you open it, now you can see out. So, if you, that, that is another option.
The neighbor actually has something to say. She seems to be okay with the trees, but do you want to bring her back up again? Do you have something to say, to add?
I just, I'm not clear how high a window is going to help.
Well, they can't walk and look down into your backyard. You have to actually get on a ladder to look out.
That's a common remedy, yes.
What about the egress? Doesn't it have to get?
That's already provided. I'll get another window.
We can provide you some more information on that after the meeting if you want to fully understand that, but it is a very normal thing for us to do here for side elevations on situations like this.
Okay, so are we in agreement on the?
I am.
Hockes, you're good? Okay. Does the applicant, he doesn't sound like he's?
Well, you, you may want to ask him if, if, if that condition is there, if they're willing to accept it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hu?
Yeah?
Come on up one more time. You're going to be so comfortable at the mic, you're just never going to want to leave, you know?
Then you won't have to work for a while.
Okay, there you go. Let me turn this on. It's, it's the consensus of the Commission that we would, one of the conditions that we're looking to put in there is that the west elevation has the clear-story windows.
Okay.
Okay? Is that okay with you? I mean, are you willing to accept that condition? We can move it along.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take it easy, yeah.
That's all we needed to know.
All right.
You're good? We're good? Okay.
All right.
Now, you can have a seat, I think, probably for the last time tonight.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let me just make a, a comment or two here. You know, it's nice to deal with an applicant that's willing to listen to the concerns of the, of the neighbors and the Commission. And again, we sent out 49 notices of the public hearing to residents and property owners And again, we sent out 49 notices of the public hearing to residents and property owners within 300 feet of the project and, you know, this is their neighborhood and if, if there's, you know, concerns, they would be here. Also, you know, what, what Mr. Who said too, I mean, this is a neighborhood that's, you know, it's a long-established neighborhood, been there for a long time, and some of those homes could use a little, you know, tend to love and care. And by him kind of kicking it off, they might jump into it. You know, I was out there today, looking at the house, looking at the neighborhood, and I just, you know, had my, you know, plans laid out on the trunk of my car, and I heard there was a couple of neighbors talking, and I could just pick it up and just say, oh yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna redo this house, gonna make it look real nice. You know, so they're not here, I don't know who they were, but they're right next door to you on the, on the left side, as you're looking at the house. And so, you know, they seem to be all for it. And I like the idea that the way the second story is designed, that it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not overpowering. You know, it's set back enough where it, it's, you can't stand out in the street and go, oh my God, what happened here? It looks, it looks nice. So I think you did a good job, and I appreciate your listening to the concerns of your neighbor. And I guess there's no further discussion, we can have a heading of the resolution?
Yeah, the resolution number will be 19-6002. And just another, there was something mentioned about landscape plan, there is a condition for a landscape plan in here.
Very good. Is there a motion on the resolution number?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Kennedy.
I'll second.
And we'll give it Don Holtz, seconded it. No further discussion, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
And Chairman Rettles.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. This action is final unless appealed to the, to the city council within 10 days. Thank you, Mr. Who, congratulations. We look forward to that new house, and we look forward to your neighbors joining you in that, down the line. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to a non-hearing item, which is item number three. Okay, this is a signed administrative review, number 19-07, a request to allow a building identification sign, Jolly Bee, at 100 North Branca Street. A categorical exemption, general plan consistency, oh no, wrong thing, I went ahead. Anyway, item number three, Mr. Director, who will be presenting that?
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission, and also members of the public. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Branca Street and East Garvey Avenue North. The request is for a building identification sign on a 13-story building. As far as the square, the maximum size of the, the signage is concerned, the West Covina Municipal Code states that the maximum size for building identification signs is three square feet for every lineal foot of street, of building frontage, plus 5% for every story above fourth, the fourth floor, and also a 250 square foot bonus because the bill, the building area is over 150,000 square feet. The proposed sign is being reviewed by the planning commission because the maximum building identification sign area calculation in the code is unclear on what to base a sign area calculation from. It doesn't, it doesn't specify if it's gonna be based on the street frontage along the base of the building, or if it's going to be the top portion of the building where the sign is going to be located on. In a standard building, standard buildings are usually the same, the same width throughout, from top to bottom, but this building is a, is a little bit unusual in that the base of the building is a lot wider than the top portion of the building itself. The proposed Jolly Bee signage would comprise of a 948.22 square feet sign, that's a total sign area, including the logo and the Jolly Bee name itself. The letters would be 593.13 square feet, and the logo is 300, 355.09 square feet. The height of the Jolly Bee sign from the bottom of the sign to the highest letter, which is the top of the I, is 11 feet 4 inches, and the height of the Jolly Bee logo, it, from the bottom of the sign to the top of the logo is 20 feet 4 inches. The sign would be made of internally illuminated channel letters bolted on a spider frame. The spider frame is necessary to prevent damage on the building's wall. In relation to this, to this proposed signage, the maximum sign area if the street frontage is used is 1,050 square feet, and the maximum area if the top wall is used is 637 square Here is a photo simulation of the Jolly Bee sign on the top of, of the proposed Jolly Bee sign on, on top of the building. Staff does not necessarily have any issues with the size of the letters itself. However, the logo appears to be much larger and disproportionate to the size of the letters. So the size, again, to remind you, the size of the, the height of the Jolly Bee letter from bottom to the top of the I is 11 feet 4 inches, and the height of the logo is 20 feet 4 inches. Staff is recommending that the size of the logo be reduced to 14 feet. In addition, given the visual prominence of the sign, the design of the sign, in staff's opinion, can be improved by revising the lighting from internally, from internal illumination to halo lighting and centering the sign so that there is even spacing between the top and bottom of the wall. So this Jolly Bee sign, Jolly Bee letters, if it was moved up a little bit so that there's even spacing between the top and the bottom of the wall. With, with this, staff recommends that the planning commission approve SAR number 19-07 as conditioned. The applicant and the applicant's team, including somebody from the Jolly Bee's corporate office and the ma, the management company for the building is also here and is able to speak on the project and answer planning commission's questions. This concludes staff's presentation. If the planning commission has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, I have a question. So you're recommending approval with the conditions that you just enumerated, that the logo be reduced to 14 feet, and that the actual body of the sign be centered more, moved up a little bit?
Yes.
Those are the conditions you're referring to, that you're recommending approval of?
Yes. However, it's up to the planning commission if the planning commission would be receptive of approving the sign as conditioned.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Hockes?
Just one question on, on the rendering of the sign with the logo on this image, that is, that's a scale representation? Is that a scale representation?
I'm, I'm not sure. You can check with the applicant. It's, it's a photo simulation, so I'm not sure how accurate the scale is.
Okay.
On rendering number five, there's a, a red bar on like the next level down. It's got some writing on it. What is that?
Like a for lease sign.
Oh, what?
Like a for lease or for rent sign, I believe that's what that says.
Not a permanent type of thing?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have one. Do we have any examples of the halo lighting that you're recommending? Is there any, I don't know what it is, but is there anything visual that we could?
I don't have any examples with me right now. However, the applicant is here and he, before the meeting, he showed me example, some examples that he had in comparison.
Okay. Commissioner Hing?
Um, there used to be a Wells Fargo sign up there, and I, and it feels like it's a lot larger. I don't, I mean, do we have any records in terms of how large it was?
Staff did try to search for records. Unfortunately, the sign has been, was there quite some time, was installed quite some time ago, and we didn't find old plans showing the size of it. We did find the building permits, but however, the building permits did not identify, identify the size of the old Wells Fargo sign.
Okay. Because from, just from perspective of looking at it right now, I remember the Wells Fargo sign, you can see it from a far distant. So I feel like it, it fill up that whole spot, even at nighttime. I don't know. So that's why I want to ask to see if that particular sign, it's relative in terms of what it was before. I think they just took it down a year or two ago?
You're correct in all those things. We, we thought we would be able to find it as well, but it was, the building permit was pulled in 2001, and these are not, these are sign permits, they're not CUPs, they're not required to be kept forever, so no, we, we don't. We looked high and low, we looked on photos, we looked on Google Earth, we looked everywhere to see if we could find something, but we, we were unfortunately unable to find anything with that size on there. I, I wouldn't debate what you're saying, I think it was similar size. One thing that we're not aware of, any signs in West Covina, it was only three buildings that this really affects in West Covina. We're not aware of any having logos, so that, that's kind of one of the things that's different about this sign than, than any of we've had in the past. So that's, we have no problem at all with the, the text of, of the sign.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a question probably for the applicant, so.
You know what, let's get the applicant up here. Mr. Rick Denman?
We have someone from Jolly Bee address you first, and then I will come up.
Who would that be?
Joseph, Joseph Dondi.
Okay, sure. Come on up, sir. Joseph Dondi, please.
Honorable commissioners, thank you very much, and staff members as well, for the privilege of having us talk. I'm always crouching over these mics, you know? I've done a few for the city of Torrance, where I've had to speak on behalf of Jolly Bee. I know a lot of you have technical questions about the sign itself, how it looks, how we intend, what we're requesting. That would be something for Mr. Rick Denman, our sign vendor, who seems to be very proficient in it. My job is just to very quickly give a value proposition as to why we're asking for what we're asking. So with admonition that a picture paints a thousand words, and hopefully a video can do some more, and with the permission of the commissioners, if I may be allowed to, usually this is a spiel I give to all the investors and real estate people that are interested in Jolly Bee, but it's about a two and a half minute video about the Jolly Bee itself. And if the commissioners will indulge me further, I'll show another two and a half minute video about our recent opening in Manhattan that we were very excited about because it really created a buzz in the industry. And as you know, this will be our headquarters for North America. And after the videos, I'll answer some questions, I'll talk some more about our plans briefly. It will be the AVP first. Joanne, if, if you may. Thank you.
Jolly Bee Foods Corporation is the largest Asian restaurant company in the world. Home to formidable brands with Jolly Bee at the helm. It operates over 4,000 stores spanning 20 countries across Asia, North America, and Europe. From its humble ice cream house beginnings to becoming a dominant ingredient leader, JFC's business model has sustained profitable growth for four decades, evident despite its steadily increasing net sales, profit, and stock market performance. It is the recipient of numerous international accolades, from best deployed to most outstanding corporation, to Asia's most admired company. JFC continuously gives back to the communities it operates in through the Jolly Bee Food Foundation. Its school programs are centered on food security, eliminating cost, so children can continue their schooling, and connecting small farmers to sell their produce to large institutions to help with their livelihood. Consistent taste, superiority, outstanding value for money, and the highest quality of food service and cleanliness, coupled with the talented commitment of its world-class organization expanding across the globe. JFC delivers on its mission to bring the joy of eating to everyone. Taking it closer to its vision of becoming one of the top five restaurant companies in the world. This is Jolly Bee Foods Corporation.
I'd like to show you another video, that Smiling Bee, and hence you'll understand why we really want that logo in there. But it's a brief video, it's the one that's marked 2018, and again, it's about two minutes or so. Manhattan, yes, please.
My name's Mira, I work at Fireland. We have a Filipino friend who's been talking to us for years, ever since he was in college, and that always gave me one in town. So-
He learned so much about his children, I would love.
These little kids are so friendly, we exit. And we have a really good cultural community here on Broadway, that this Jolly Bee is gonna bring us that much closer together, and that much closer to home, because every time we fly into it, it's pretty astounding.
They actually have some non-Lincoln cast members who are from the Bay Area, and they're like, Johnny, is that what you're on the water? And I'm like, you know what that is? Of course they do. Chicken Joy. I was like, yes.
We're not moving to the fast food world, but finding company here is not having a melting pot of new type of restaurants, they first opened Asia, everybody who wants to try something, they get out and they do it. It's all good. And once we finally land theater, it would have a closer border to it, it's really good.
So those were the two videos. I hope for a few moments there, we entertained you. And in a nutshell, I have a long spiel here, but in interest of time, I'll go straight to it. Jolly Bee intends to grow exponentially in the U.S., not just to the Jolly Bee brand, but the Jolly Bee Foods Corporation actually, as you've seen, handles a lot of brands under it. You saw Burger King sign there, we own the franchise rights to Burger King in the Philippines and other Southeast Asian countries. We own exclusive Dunkin' Donuts franchise rights to China. And we're, very recently, we made a purchase of Coffee Bean Tea Leaf, we're very proud of that. We want to expand them, we want to grow them into, you know, something that can rival Starbucks at least. It used to be considered a rival, but it kind of fell a bit on the side. And we also own Smash Burger, which is an outfit based out of Denver with about 300-plus units. And we want West Covina and this office building to be the center of all that activity. We want to bring, we want to be to West Covina what In-N-Out is to Baldwin Park, what Panda Express is to Rosemead. You know, we want to, we want to bring even more awareness to this city, and I think it's a win-win. We know for a fact that, you know, your Asian-American component in West Covina is about 31,000, and out of that- about 31,000, and out of that, 10,000 are your Filipino-American community. It's not common knowledge, but in LA County as a whole, the second-largest Asian community is the Filipino-American community. They're kind of a silent community, just, you know, blends in everywhere they go. So we're bigger than both the Vietnamese, the Korean, and the Japanese-American communities combined. The only group in the Asian community that just slightly edges us out is the Chinese-American community. And so we're, there's a reason besides, you know, the building is prominent, there's got, there's street visibility, there was a little bit of an emotional tug to West Covina for us. There is a significant Filipino-American community, there's a Jolly Bee restaurant over at Azusa and Amar, and we're actually looking for two more at least, one maybe in the Eastland Center if we can find space, and another Jolly Bee somewhere in, in West Covina. We're planning to get out of that Filipino-American market and bring everybody into our doors. So with that said, our initial batch of employees will be 100 employees. In three years, we're planning to double that, and God only knows, as we expand and bring, consolidate more of that into West Covina, it's, it's going to be exciting, it's going to be great in the sense that we want this to be our HQ, and that's why we're asking for what we're asking in, in terms of the prominent signage. So if you have any questions for me, Commissioners, about the business itself, you may ask. If it's something technical about the sign itself, I'll have Mr. Denman come over here and talk about that, since I know nothing about signs, I'll say that upfront.
Commissioner Holtz?
A couple of questions, I think you answered it in your, in your speech. You're not planning on putting a restaurant inside the building, are you?
No, sir. I think it would be tough, just from a layout standpoint, and it, it wouldn't, you know, I cannot say what in maybe 10 years, maybe, maybe minds will change, maybe the concept of the brand will change.
But not initially.
But not initially, because the challenge is, we, we have a big kitchen, our menu is pretty eclectic, we need at least 1,600 square feet just for a kitchen, just for the production area. You know, we serve chicken sandwiches, bone-in chicken, hamburgers, some Asian noodle dish called Palabok, which is really good, it's got garlic and shrimp. I was thinking for a second about appropriateness of bringing fried chicken and all, but we decided for a first meeting, maybe not, not immediately, we didn't want a room to smell like food.
It would have been appropriate, by the way.
Yes, it would have been.
Now I know.
But you are planning on bringing more local presence, though, restaurant-wise?
Absolutely. We, we have expansion plans, as I've said, we, I don't, we, we're trying at the moment, it's very early in terms of consolidating, you know, Coffee Bean and Smash Burger and all these other brands, but eventually, our, our plan is growth, the word is growing, it's to grow more stores, more business, and to bring more business to, to not just West Covina, but LA County and, and the whole of the US.
Okay, changing lanes, you're not planning on putting a sign on the east side, just, just this one on the west?
Just this one, yes.
Okay, and maybe this, you can answer this or not, is, is the sign just going to be lit up, or is it going to be flashing, or what's, what's the sign going to work like?
It's, it's not going to be flashing. No, we know, it's not going to be dancing, it's not, there are no lasers, there's no, we, we want it to be tasteful, you know, we wanted it to be corporate, and our owners want it to be something that will bring pride, you know, nothing fancy and, what's the word that my father used to say, kitschy, you know, nothing kitschy and nothing, we want it to be, to have the impact of a corporate headquarters.
So it's a solid lit sign?
Is it the solid lit sign?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Higginson?
The current headquarters, where is it currently?
Right now, ma'am, I'm ashamed to say that it's a pretty small office over at the City of Industry. Now, that's the corporate headquarters for the US and Canada. Of course, we have, we own a whole building in the Philippines, that's the world corporate headquarters. This would be, this West Covina building would be our US and North America corporate headquarters, so including, so our Canadian, we've opened five stores in Canada, we plan to open 150 more, they will be reporting to this office as well. So the current office, yeah, I, I couldn't invite you guys there, I, I feel ashamed, and that's why we're scaling up with our ambitions, we're trying to, we've signed this lease, we're moving in here. We, we humbly ask that we be allowed, maximum allowed signage under the rules, to create an impact, not just for us, but for, for the city. You know, if you're, if you're going to allow us to build something there, it might as well be something that, that looks good.
Thank you.
What, what kind of square footage did you take in the building?
It's about 22,000, 28,000?
28,000 square feet?
With allowances, with options for future expansion as well, like first options in case a floorget becomes available and we need to grow, we'll take more of it as, as it becomes available, as we need it.
And you mentioned Coffee Bean, you have Coffee Bean franchise, is in North America?
Coffee Bean worldwide, yeah.
So you got Coffee Bean completely?
Yes, we purchased Coffee Bean, they're just in the process of transferring ownership, but it's been announced on Reuters and on...
And Burger King is Asia?
Burger King in Asia, not Burger King.
Right, right, okay. Well, I'll tell you, Coffee Bean does need help, so...
I love their coffee, I love their locations, you know, it's, it's sad that, I think Mr. Herman or Heineman, when he opened it back in the 60s and 70s, he was really into it, but then I think, you know, I don't know the whole story, but then he sold it to a family based out of Singapore, that family made it big in Asia, but it kind of lagged behind in the States, and Starbucks just ran off.
Yeah, well, they were right there, years ago, they were right there with Starbucks.
They were, they were, absolutely. I actually prefer their, their blended drinks to Starbucks, that was just me, my preference. They came out with those heated, what do you call them, those fireplaces first, before anybody else came out, though. And great locations, there's one in Santa Monica Pier, there's a couple in Venice, Hollywood.
Questions? Commissioner Kennedy?
I am from a small... Good question, sir, I'm from a small island right in the center.
Oh, no, I mean, the, the company, where, where they, where was the first?
Oh, okay, I thought you were asking me, no. The company itself...
But you can tell me, that's, I'm okay with that.
You know, if anything, you'll have to stop me from talking, but, no, the company itself is from the island of Luzon, it's, it's right at the center, in Metro Manila.
I've been there, okay.
Cool, cool.
I was just curious.
You have a general understanding?
Oh, absolutely.
Navy, perhaps?
I was in the Marine Corps.
Ah, there you go.
I was on the sixth Tripoli, yeah, I, I was part of the Navy Sixth Fleet, yeah, Marine detachment.
I heard a lot of beautiful stories from...
I don't have any stories, so... Can you?
My dad was a serviceman in the Air Force, so Clark Air Base in the Philippines was his thing.
I, I also say that I'm honored that you guys picked West Covina. You, you could have stayed in the City of Industry, but you came over here, and, and thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the seasoning and the, and the, you know, the flavor of the chicken?
Well, you know, just like the Colonel, we have our secret blend of seven herbs and spices. No, but this is what I'll say, the spices for the breading actually comes from the Philippines. We've tried producing it over at factories over here, and we just can't get the flavor right, we don't know what it is, you know? So, but the chicken absolutely comes from the United States, on our peach mango pie, the peach comes from Australia, the mango comes from the Philippines. So we try to bring as much of that local flavor, but incorporating, of course, USDA grade A beef, you know? If I sound like a salesman now, that's because I am partly a salesman.
Are you hungry, Commissioner?
I could start flipping through the menu, but, yeah, we were proud to move into West Covina, and my wife's been bugging me about finding a place here to live, so it will save us from traffic, you know? I, I live in Long Beach right now, been living there for 12 years, moving to Downey apartment, and now thinking of buying a house in West Covina, and this makes more sense now that we're moving here.
Now, one, just let me piggyback on Commissioner Holtz, who talked about where the sign is located, on the west-facing part of the building, whose decision is that? Is that a, a Jolly Bee decision, or is that a?
Well, when we first, when this site was offered to us, the signage that was shown was the Wells Fargo sign, and the Wells Fargo sign was on this west-facing front, and we were thinking briefly about what other options there were. Obviously, if it was up to us, we would have put a sign all around that place, you know, that, that's just corporate, they're always asking, what if, can we add more? And of course, we have to work with, you know, signage regulations and, and the, and the Commission, and it just made sense for us why it, it seemed that face seemed the most logical face to put it. You know, the, the other side, the east-facing, if I'm not mistaken, is a little curved, and so it, it would look weirder. We, we tried initially to visualize it using CAD software, and this just looked like the most logical place to, to put it.
My, where I'm coming from on this, it seems like as you're heading into West Covina, heading west from the east, that is an iconic building, you know, and as you come into the city, you're, you know, you see the Jolly Bee name and logo and all that, and this one, you're seeing it as you're exiting the city.
That is unless you're coming from the west and heading east towards West Covina, so it's...
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's...
I get, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying, and again, if it was up to us, we would have put two signs on there, one on each side, probably four sides if we could, but ultimately, it was, it was a question that we brought to our president for the US, and she made the call that, you know what, it was, it was a tough thing, you know, we, we really weren't sure, because, I agree with you, sir, I, I, if you're driving from the east, heading west, it would be beautiful, because you see the city, you see LA coming up, and then you would see that sign as you get off, as you get off that elevation, heading downwards. She just made that call, saying, you know what, there's a lot of people driving home, dinnertime, dinnertime is our crowd, and this is the going-home side, the, the, the traffic is a little bit heavier going home that way, and we wanted to get that people to understand that, hey, you know, people living in further, further east, you know, hey, what is that in West Covina, that's a big Jolly Bee sign. So the next step for me, because it's my job, is to look for another property for a restaurant, for an actual restaurant near that, so maybe the Eastland Center, maybe something nearby, hopefully with a drive-through if I can find one.
So, yeah, Commissioner Holtz?
Our staff made a, made a recommendation, the highest letter was 11 feet, I think, and your logo was 22, and they suggested making it down to 14 feet. Do you have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem, sir, personally, but we would like, we would prefer it to be larger for the extra impact. Understand that I don't, I don't have the authority to say yes or no, it's, it's a very, it's, it's a company, hence you have a committee that will make ultimate decisions. I will bring whatever, whatever is decided here, I'll bring it back. In a way, I'm sort of a messenger, you know, I'm a person who will answer your questions, but I can't commit to anything at this point.
So there's nobody here that can do that either, right?
Come again, sir.
There's nobody here that can make that decision?
No, sir.
Okay, so if we would say that's what we're recommending, you'd have to take it back to this committee?
Yes, sir.
Do that, okay.
I wish I had more authority.
That's fine, that's fine.
I wish.
Commissioner Hawke has?
Yes, and just to clarify about the decision to not include a sign on the east side of the building, was that mainly for, what drove, do you know what drove that decision to not pursue putting a sign on that side? Was it technical feasibility or, or some other reason?
I don't think it was so much technical feasibility as it was probably aesthetics, knowing that every, for every sign, for every side that we put a sign on, it would reduce from the overall sign, from the main sign, let's say on the west side, if we put another sign on the east side, it would reduce the size of the sign on, so we had a choice of going with two smaller signs or one big sign. And I guess the consensus was, let's go, the consensus was, let's go for one big sign instead of two smaller signs. So that was, that was as best as I can recall the thinking.
Okay, and then, and then in that case, I'm not really clear as to why was there a choi, why was there a choice between two smaller signs versus one larger sign?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but it has to do with what's allowed in terms of total square footage of signs, correct? That if I get for two signs, it would reduce the over, let's say I'm allowed 900 square feet. Now, if I get two sign, if I get one sign, I have 900 square feet, if I get two signs, I have to divide that between the two, so...
Yeah, I think there, there may be some confusion, but no, this is per, when we have a sign, it's per side.
Oh, it's per side?
So, yeah, we, we, staff never let them know that there was a problem with the sign on the east side.
Well, if you look on page two, you can see the back of the building on the east side, and I don't think it's, it looks like it drops down, and I don't know if they put a sign on it, if it would, if you'd be able to see it that well from going east to west. It's not, it's not flat on the front, it's curved, and then it looks like a drop-down roof. So I don't know, if, if they're satisfied with what they have, and now that they heard you could have two the same size, you may take that back to your committee.
I might take that back and ask for two of the same size on, on each side. But it's, I didn't know that.
I think they may require variance for two?
No.
Is there a variance that they require, need for two?
No, no, a building identification sign is, is, this is a building identification sign that we're talking about, so that names a building, so there's not a, if you think about other buildings like this, with the footyel transit building that has, I forget, Chase, I think, on the top of it, and I think it is on more than one side, so, yes, no, there's not a problem with putting it on more than one elevation.
Yeah, I would...
Wasn't Wells Fargo on both sides?
My memory is that Wells Fargo was on both sides, but I, as I said, I couldn't find any evidence, so I don't remember.
I, I would just suggest that if they're...
I think it was only one side.
Yeah, I really wanted to get to the bottom of that, because, you know, as we've heard your presentation and talked about it, I'm very well, I'm familiar with Jolly Bee well enough that I've eaten at a Jolly Bee in the Philippines, so, I enjoyed it. And this is a very big deal for the city, this is something, nothing short of monumental of a move for a corporation to make its home in the city. I, I think if there is that opportunity for you to, to consider a sign on both sides, that you'd be afforded that opportunity as far as I'm concerned, so maybe that's why I wanted that clarification.
Would you like to take it back to the committee?
Yes, and if you would identify yourself and your name and position, if relevant.
Hi, my name is Maji Martinez, and I'm representative of the ownership for the building, and thank you for having me, Commissioners and staff. So when we negotiated on the project, part of it was actually the, the west, either the west side or the east side, and either the north side or the south side. So they chose which sides they wanted to do, so we let them have two sides in terms of like east or west, and then north or south. But the south, I guess, something was wrong with getting the variance for it, and we needed to apply for a variance, so I, I don't think that they've moved into that route, but that is something that's still available for them, depending on when they want to apply for that.
Well, we're talking about the east and the west, not the south.
Right, so when we were just negotiating, it was either west or east, and then either north or south, and then they picked the east or west, and then the south.
So you as, you representing the ownership, the, the negotiation was one or the other, the, there was not an option for having a sign on both side, both east and west sides of the building considered? And was that, and, and maybe the gentleman from Jolly Bee can speak to this, but was there, was there an initial interest in signs on both sides?
I'm not sure if I remember, but I know that we were trying to get them to get signage on either direction that we wanted, so not on all four sides, but just limiting it to certain directions.
And what was the reason for limiting it to one, one side or the other and not allowing it on both sides, what's, is there...
Just in case it doesn't, like, comply with the city requirements.
Well, that can be determined before it goes forward.
Yeah, but apparently now that, that wouldn't be an issue in terms of city requirements of allowing signs on both side, east and, and west sides, as we understand it now.
But we'll have to go back to the ownership now, because it's part of the lease that it was already like one side or the other, and then like the west side and the south side.
Well, I would be east and west myself, I don't see the, the south being...
I don't see the south being an option.
You want to catch that freeway action going both directions.
It's about the freeway traffic, and...
So since, since this is a lease in an internal agreement that they have, and we're here just approving the sign, can we just look at the sign currently? And then if, in the future, if they wanted to add the east, the west, or whichever... And then if, in the future, if they wanted to add the east, the west, or whichever side it is, they can come back again and add that addition. So we should just, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other que, no, okay. Mr. Denman, you want to come up and, uh, talk about the highly technical aspect of this sign, please?
Chair Redholtz, commissioners, thank you for hearing tonight. Where'd Renee go? Anyway, I always wanted to say thank you for Renee and yourself for help guiding us through. Thirty-five years ago, I had a problem with the IRS. I had a tremendous amount of money. And Ron Cable helped me through this. And what he did at night, you and I might be reading a book or watching TV, he read the Congressional Journal and found out the intent of what the law was. So when I went in and got the code, the municipal code for the city of West Covina, I read through the formula and go, these people got it right. And the reason I say that is because there's a lot of, a lot of things to consider. You've got the height of the building, you've got the frontage of the building, you've got the square footage, the mass of the building. And to be fair to a sign that's down low, a little eyebrow sign, compared to a sign that's at the top of a building, right next to a freeway, you need a formula like that. So I was very impressed with that. So we took the formula, we put it together and we verified with the city that we were doing the correct calculations. And this is how we came up with the square footage that we did. To answer the question, this is a static sign. It's called a face lighting channel letter sign. So we build a body out of aluminum, we put LED lights that don't twinkle or anything, they're just solid. And then we put an acrylic face on. This is, uh, the best type of a sign for this particular use. Staff made a recommendation here to do a reverse pan channel letter with halo illumination. I brought some photos of, uh, could you hand these out? These are photos of a reverse pan channel letter with halo illumination. How this is manufactured, there's five of you, right? So take a, take a frying pan, fill it full of Christmas tree lights, put it against a wall, pull it away a little bit, turn and plug it in. And there's a halo around that pan that just glows in the dark. So this is the kind of a sign. Yeah, I've got, I've got some more. This is a ti, type of a sign that I would use for East Saint Laurent, Nordstrom's, I would use it for Saks Fifth Avenue. I would use it when I'm straight in front of that sign because it's great. You guys have in your hands what it looks like from the side. It's horrible. You can't read it. And right now, we're proposing a sign that people are driving and looking and looking, blah, 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 and they're buying. I doubt that they're going to have a minute. And as they get closer, they get this obtuse angle and a reverse pan channel letter is not a, it would be a mistake. Second reason, we're doing, we're protecting the wall of this building with a spider frame. It's, it, you're not even going to see it, but it's actually this big. And if I put a pan, reverse pan, throwing light on that uneven surface that has just been created to suspend and protect that wall, it will not look good. So they didn't put this down as a condition, they put it down as a recommendation. And I, you know what, if I was a planner, I would say, we want the best for our city, that's the kind of sign I want to recommend. I would be on board for that. I think that was a good recommendation. But as a sign designer, as a sign fabricator, in this situation, it would not be good. So, um, I'm going to address a couple of things. I've seen a photograph of the Wells Fargo bank, or the Wells Fargo sign on this building. And what I saw was letters that went from edge to edge. It wasn't 70%, it was from one edge of the building to the other edge. I went into the office to see if I could pull up the old permits for that. My dates might be wrong, but what I was told at the counter is that in 2002, all the blueprints and everything were destroyed and everything was put on the computer. And they gave me a piece of paper that said, there always a permit. It didn't have any sizes, but it said two signs and it was for Wells Fargo. So there is some kind of a record here at the city that says Wells Fargo had two signs. What was the other question? Oh, question about the proportion. I think you asked the proportion of the rendering. That rendering was created, in fact. This drawing right here is to scale. It's the line drawing, it's face on. They took that and they put it onto the photo and then they proportionately increased it. So it's a rendering, it's, it's not exact, but it's a whole lot better than most things. Can you guys imagine driving down the street and you've got a mobile card, right? That's your gas company. And you see this big yellow sign that says mobile on it. What the heck? What is that? Branding, you guys, it's branding. Jolly Bee has a proportion of the logo icon to the letter height. And you saw those photos that Joseph had in the little, in the movie? Did you see how big that logo was compared to the letter height? That's where this came from. We didn't just come up with, with this proportion on the building. So, um, I am asking that you guys, if you would, that you guys, I'm sorry, commissioners, approve what we submitted for the sign at the size that we submitted it at. And that you do not make a condition that we would use reverse pan channel letters. That is my request. And other than that, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Denman. Any questions? Now's your chance.
Um, I actually have a question. I can see the pictures in terms of what it looks like during the daylight. However, at nighttime, I mean, besides this one that you're offering us to look at that you don't want, what about the one that you want? Is there, I don't, I don't think I see it on the plan.
Yeah, there's not a nighttime, but if you go to page six and you go to the left side, item number three, that's pretty much what it's going to look like at night, you know, with darkness around it.
So just a lot of white lights versus a little red on that little. Lo, logo, I mean, um.
There's RGB lights which change in color, there's electronic message centers which are bright LED lights that are unrestricted. And these are LEDs, but these have a filter on them. This, this has a piece of white acrylic, actually it's poly, polycarbonate plastic. So it's, it's a filtered light. It's not. It's not a glaring light, like your floor lights that are shooting up if you stood over top. It's not like that. It's, it's more like these lights that have a filter on them. So.
Any other questions? Nope. Commissioner Hockes?
Yeah, um, you did, you did answer a question I had on my mind. It was, was going to ask about, uh, the branding in terms of the proportion of the logo to the lettering. You know, I guess what you, what you just, uh, told us confirms that that's part of, that's part of the, I guess, the standard for the branding of the corporate name along with the logo and having that, those proportions relative to, you know, of the, of each, relative to each other. How would, um, yeah, I, I do, um, sort of agree with the staff recommendation that, that the logo figure is a bit large for the space. And, um, suppose I would have to do a little math calculation, figure out if you were to bring that down to, from a 20-foot-high logo to a, what they were asking for was a 14? What would the proportion on the lettering be in that case? And, and would that, would that end up bringing the lettering down to a size would be essentially, you know, illegible from?
Yeah, it would not be a good move. It, to make it worthy, it would need to, it would need to be a, a logo height of like 16 and a half, 17 feet tall.
Was the proposal to, 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 to lower the lettering too, or just the, just the logo, right?
What I was suggesting was, or asking, was that based on the lettering height relat, or the logo height relative to lettering height, their proportion, their proportion is part of their branding, is the standard for how they, how they are sized relative to each other. And, you know, since the 20-foot height of the logo is rather kind of obtrusive for the space, I was, um, I was wondering if by bringing down the size of the logo and keeping the lettering proportionate, you know, proportionate to the branding, would it make that lettering illegible from typical distances that people would see it and recognize it?
I don't, I don't think that's what we're talking about. I just thought that it was okay to have the jovely, uh, the highest letter was I and that was 11-foot and the, the logo was 22-foot, to lower just a logo from 22 to 14, not to mess with the letters. That was my understanding.
Yeah, no, that's correct, and that's correct. Uh, but I was trying to see if, uh, asking based on, you know, the sign expert, if keeping the proportion, you know, in accordance with the branding standard would still keep, would still, would the lettering be illegible from typical distances that you would read it?
I think the sign would be too small if they did that.
Too small in that case.
Be too small. That's, that's my opinion. Yeah, and I guess I have a question of staff. Why did you recommend reducing it to 14-foot? What made you recommend that?
Well, it, it's the, it's the proportion, it, there, there's many ways to look at logos and, and lots of companies have logos and they don't include it on their sign. Um, probably every company has a logo and doesn't, Wells Fargo has a logo, but they didn't include it on their sign. So this is a choice that they make and I, I'm not taking away from their logo, but their sign isn't their logo. And so looking at this, I mean, that, that, the size of that is, is a, is a two-car garage, right? That's the size. It's a two-car garage and that, and when you have a, um, what, what would be typically called a, um, can sign, which is basically what's being proposed, a can sign basically lets light shine through the whole sign. That's a lot of light that comes through, especially if you're talking about a two-car garage. So we're just, we were just trying to make it so it maybe fit a little bit better into the sign area and also in context with, with the, with the important part of the sign, which is the, the wording.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a very tall building. It's kind of our landmark and it's, it's almost like a beam sticking out. I, I really don't have a problem with it the way it is, the way they designed it. I really don't. And you said something too about centering it more? Did you say something about centering it more like it's bringing the?
It's, well, if you think of the way it's, it's.
But I don't think you can do it if it's that size.
If you look at Jolly Bee, so again, uh, i- i- if, if, if the, if the concern for the size of the logo is not there, then it kind of throws off the whole discussion because if you look at the way Jolly Bee is centered on the building, it's not. So that was the concern, that perhaps it should be raised up a little bit, so it's, it's got a more of an equal distance between the top and the bottom. Not necessarily equal distance, but more of an equal distance.
So leave the, leave the logo the way it is, but bring the lettering up more centered. Is that what you're saying?
That, that would be one thought, yes.
I, I think we ought to ask.
Does that conform with the branding standard?
To, to center it, yeah, I, I, I'm going to say that item three on that page that we've got up on the screen is, is probably not as well proportioned. Look straight above that to item one, which is an elevation. Look in the, right by the Jolly Bee logo and it says equal, equal, top and bottom. Look at the top and it says equal, equal. So the sign with the lettering and the icon are spaced equal, left and right, to the outermost portion.
I'd, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, uh, if they have a problem with the sign the way it is, with the 22-foot logo and just the way it's designed.
I would first suggest you finish the hearing and then before you have a discussion.
That's a, that's a discussion item. Any other questions for Mr. Denman?
Also, it just brought to my attention since you mentioned regarding the size of the logo and the lighting. I mean, it, will this be on all night long? Is that, because some signs are not on all, all night?
Well, 2006 Title 24 would allow it to be on one hour before sunset and one hour after sunrise. Typically on a, on a building like this, it would go off at midnight and come back on the next day at, depending if it was Christmas time, 4:30 in the afternoon. During summer time, it'd come on at 7:30.
Okay, so during the evening hours between midnight to four or five in the morning, you're not intended to. Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Denman.
Thank you.
Is there another speaker that wants to speak? Uh, Mr. Quinto or? No, you're good? Okay. Those are all the cards I have in favor. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Jerry Patras, come on up and be heard.
That is a huge logo. I think staff's recommendation of making it a little smaller is a good one, keeping the letters. I don't have a problem with it being on both sides, but I can't fathom how a big, was it 20 feet? Logo is going to be. It's, uh, big. I think it's going to get people's attention. I think a little smaller might be, uh, appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? I guess not. Okay, we will go to, uh, Commissioner Discussion. Commissioner Holtz?
I'd like to ask the commissioners if they have any problem with the size, the way it's been presented. And if they don't, then we're really, you know, spinning our wheels.
Well, let me, let me just make a, a quick comment. When I, when I came in here tonight after reviewing the, uh, you know, the material that was presented about this, I was under the impression that it was too big. I thought, you know what, it needs to be, it needs to be, uh, it needs to be reduced. It's too big. A number of factors, including Mr. Denman's presentation, have changed my mind. We have to remember, as Mr. Commissioner Holtz brought up, that this is 13 stories up. You know, this is not a, a monument sign. This is up there. And, uh, you know, it's, as, we're not going to be standing next to it. You know, this is a long way up. And as Ms. Patras just said, this is going to get people's attention. That means it's a good sign. You know, signs are supposed to do that. That's people in the sign business, that's, that's their pitch. Hey, you want your customers to see it, it's, it's going to be seen. And I was kind of leaning toward the, uh, the halo lighting. I'm not leaning that way anymore. You know, it's funny, you can come in with a mindset and, you know, change your mind. Because we want, now even though, I mean, even, even though it's not advertising a restaurant location, you're not going to pull people off the freeway to pull into that building and, and get chicken joy. But, you know, it's certainly going to put in their head that, hey, Jolly Bee, you know, they're going to start relating to what it is and, and, you know, maybe get hungry looking at it and want to find the restaurant, go to Google and say, where's the nearest Jolly Bee? You know, that's what happens. And as people are traversing that freeway, I mean, this is why I think you might want to at least explore the idea of the other side. You know, the old story, get them coming, get them going. You know, I mean, that's, that building is an iconic structure, which by the way, thank you for coming into that building and putting it back on the map because it's got some, you know, interesting history there. So, um, you know, to answer Commissioner Holtz's question, I'm fine with it as presented. Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm good too. I, I, uh, if that, if that was my business, I'd want everybody to see me from Ballin Park too. So in fact, I'd actually want it bigger. So, uh, I, I, I have no issue with it and, uh, And, uh, I, I'm actually, thank you for coming into West Covina.
Commissioner Hockes?
Likewise, I actually, Commissioner Redholtz, I had exactly the same feeling coming in. I was, I looked at that, at the dimensions and thought, wow, that is a, you know, my, again, initial instinct, that is a red thumb. And, um, I read the staff report about, you know, reducing the size of it. I said, okay, well, that sounds, sounds reasonable. But again, my mind was changed too. And, um, you know, a, a company or, or a corporate entity like, uh, Jolly Bee, uh, has its, uh, has its standards for how it represents itself. Um, you know, we should, and we, in terms of our role here, should be very welcoming to, you know, businesses coming in and setting up home in West Covina. And, and especially, you know, I know what you mean, Herb, about that building has had issue, has had its issues. Wow, I, I couldn't think of a greater turnaround to have, you know, um, an organization like yours come in to be part of that turnaround. So, um, and it's, and certainly in terms of the idea of, you know, reducing the logo size relative, you know, to the lettering, um, those are the sort of things that I think we should always be sensitive about. Sensitive about, you know, this is your brand. You know, this is, you know, this is not for us to mess with your brand. You know, it, either, you know, we, um, within reason, you know, welcome you or we don't. But we, we welcome you. This is a monumental move that's going to do a lot of good for, uh, business in the city. Uh, it's going to bring people, you know, new employment into the city, already 100 off the bat and possibly doubling in the near future. That's a good thing for West Covina. So, you know, my mind was changed too. And, uh, and likewise, why I was asking the questions about the east side, uh, west side versus the east side, and really, you know, really what was going on there with that? And how was the, you know, the, um, the owner's negotiations going with you on that? It was apparently, there was some misunderstanding there as to what, as to what you could do. Same as with, uh, Chair Redholtz. I would encourage you to go back and look at that. Uh, I would, you know, my, in my mind's eye, as I'm driving westbound on the 10 and coming down the Kellogg grade, and I see that iconic building and, you know, and the sun is setting over Santa Monica and Malibu and giving the silhouette of downtown LA, and you have, you know, the light come on that building, you know, we have, um, we have a, um, you know, great corporate neighbor that set up home, you know, in our city. This is something we want to, you know, see, you know, make happen and make happen for you. So my mind's changed too. I'm, I think we're very much in favor for it, favor of the way it's proposed.
Commissioner Hing?
I'd like to add that I used to see that sign in terms of Wells Fargo letter on a daily basis, but, um, for some reason, I thought the Wells Fargo's letter is a lot larger. I, you know, it's been, I can't just put one-to-one, but since the Wells Fargo's just been taking off, but when you used to see it on a daily basis for some reason, it kind of stuck in my head that the letter used, of Wells Fargo used to be bigger, and especially the logo. The W was huge as I was, you know, that's the first thing you pick up years ago. And that particular sign was taken off, so, and in that building also, it is a big giant building, and you can see it from a distant when you're driving back. And, and there's a big, huge blank space over there, so I think it's, I think it's okay in that. Yeah.
Let me give you a quick analogy as far as signage and branding. Many, many years ago, I think Commissioner Holtz was on the commission with me back then, Norm's, Norm's Restaurants, remember? Wanted to come here, and they're here. And they came to us and they proposed their, we have to have our iconic, tall, flag-moving sign. But we didn't allow moving signs, you know, what are you kidding? But we had a couple of commissioners that wanted a monument sign. And, you know, we, a few of us, you know, argued and said, you know what? If you want Norm's to come to your city, part of Norm's is that sign. It's the iconic sign. That's who Norm's is. Look at all their locations. That's their brand. That's part of who and what they are and what they represent. And, you know, they, they came and, and we eventually approved, I believe it's a 32-foot sign. And they really, they wanted 35. Some wanted a monument, some wanted 18 feet or whatever, but we came to 30, 32. And of course, Norm's has been there on that Azusa Workman corner for many, many years now and doing very well. And the funny thing is, they, they chose not to appeal our decision at that 32-foot height. And I know that the council would have given him 35. And they said, no, we're happy, we're going to go with this. And, you know, could have had the 35. But anyway, that's, that's the analogy, you know, I mean, that's the branding that, you know, you have Jolly Bee coming in here with a, you know, really, you talk about putting a city on a map, I mean, that's pretty good. And, you know, with a big investment, taking a building that needs what you're bringing to it. So, you know, if you want Jolly Bee, that's their sign, that's their logo, and, you know, as Commissioner Hockes and I, you know, we came in with a different mindset and, you know, that's what we're here for, to listen to, listen to reason and listen to arguments and, you know, sometimes you change your mind. Any other comments? If not, is there a resolution number for this? No, just need a motion. Just need a motion.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
You're too slow, Hockes.
Man, that's twice he's beaten me to it.
I'll give you the second.
But I'm more than happy to second, uh, Commissioner Holtz's, uh, motion.
Okay.
To approve as presented by the applicant.
We have a motion by Holtz, second by Hockes, to approve the proposal as the applicant has requested. Is that correct?
I believe that's what the motion was.
Then let's have a roll call on that motion, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Congratulations. Congratulations on a good presentation by everybody. And congratulations, and thank you for bringing your corporate national North American headquarters to the city of West Covina. We appreciate it. Thank you. How do you top that? Not going to be easy, is it?
General Plan Consistency.
Yes, it's exactly.
And if you want to come back for the, uh, east side, bring chicken.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I want to, I want to leave you with this. A building is a building is a building, but a building with a sign is a landmark.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Staff.
All right, now, we are going to move on to item number four. A General Plan Consistency Determination, General Exemption, The Applicant, The City of West Covina. Mr. Anderson?
So Joanne will be presenting that report as well.
Thank you.
Again, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission and also members of the public. The item before you is a General Plan Consistency. Prior to the sale of any city-owned property, the California Government Code requires this, a city planning agency to make a finding that the property disposition conforms to the goals, objectives, and policy of the gen, the city's general plan. The subject property is considered, is known as Parcel D of the Eastland Shopping Center. It is the parking lot located on the west side of Baranca Street, and it's highlighted on the screen, um, on, on the projector, um, in yellow. On June 3rd, 2019, the Eastland Shopping Center owner submitted an offer to the city to purchase this land. On, on June 16, 2019, during closed session, the city council directed staff to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement. And at the August 20th, 2019 city council meeting, the city council directed the city manager to open escrow and negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement for this particular parcel. As far as the use is concerned, the general plan designates the use as commercial, and the site, or the, the parcel is being used as a parking lot and is going to remain a parking lot use. So the use in, land use designation isn't going to change. As far as the policies and goals of the general plan, it is, thus, the disposition is consistent to our Prosperous Community Goal One, which is to maintain and monitor West Covina's fiscal health. Policy 2.1, maintain and enhance the city's current tax base, and Action 2.1C, ensure that, that new development is not a fis, fiscal burden to the city. It also conforms to our Prosperous, Prosperous Community Goal Three, nurture local businesses and attract non-retail jobs. Policy, and also Policy 2.9, support local businesses, and Action 2.9, provide incentives to encourage business and landowners to renovate and strengthen their businesses. With this, staff recommends that this Planning Commission adopt, um, a resolution finding that the disposition of APN number 8451-012-907, known as Parcel D, is in conformance with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan. This concludes staff presentation. If the Planning Commission has any questions, staff is available to answer.
Thank you, Joanne. Any questions? Nope. Seems pretty cut and dried. Mr. Anderson, any?
Uh, the resolution number is 19-6003, if you'd like that.
Love it. Who's going to make that motion? Hockes?
I'm going to, Greg.
Wait.
Okay, I, I.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, oh, no, you can't do that. I move adoption of the resolution, uh, finding the, the, this action is in conformance with the general plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hockes. Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All the, uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. All right. Paulina, you're leaving after that?
No.
Nope. Why are you leaving? All right, next is the study session on the housing elements. The crowd's been waiting for this.
So, um, this was, um, a request from Commissioner Hockes for some information, and I thought it might be ideal perhaps to bring a, just basically a summary of the housing element and what it is and what we're going to be facing over the next year or so, and it's kind of a housing element 101, if you will. So some of you may have noticed, there's been some media attention placed on housing elements by the state, by the governor's office. Huntington Beach comes to mind, and there, I think, is one or two other cities that have been in the news. There's a list, I think, of cities that, that the, that the state is concerned about because they either do not have a certified housing element, or they are not in compliance with their certified housing, housing element. The city has a, I have some display models here. The city has a general plan. Okay, the general plan, fortunately for all of us, was, was adopted in 2016, because the one before that was 1985, which we had staff members who weren't born at that point in time. So you want to keep that kind of fresh so that you, you, it reduces your risk of lawsuits from people not believing that you're following your general plan. And the general plan has seven required elements. One of them is the housing element. Now, the way that works is, it's, the housing element is not in our general plan because it's a different document, and it's the only element of the, of the general plan that has to be modified or revised every few years. And that's required by, by what we call affectionately HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And they determine what your timeframe is. So in Southern California, our timeframe was originally, I'm sorry, the last cycle was 2014 through 2021. So come along about 2013, we, we were able to get a housing element certified by the state, which means that we showed that we could comply with the numbers that were given to us through what's called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Process, which is either called RENA or RENA, depending on who you're talking to. I don't, I don't know how you spell something or pronounce them with no vowels, but anyway, there's a debate on which way you pronounce that acronym. Anyway, so that's how, so the numbers we were given last time was 831 units. So we needed to provide, we needed to provide capacity of zoning for 831 units. We did that through the downtown area, well, this area we're in right now. And then when we did the general plan, we modified that a bit because we adopted what was the downtown plan now, and we increased the densities in some places and reduced them in others. And so we needed to change that housing element, so we actually had it revised in 2016. It was certified in 2017 by the state. So the city of West Covina has a certified housing element. I can tell you, we haven't always had a certified housing element in my, in my tenure here, but we do now. We have since 2013, I believe. So we are not on that list that the state is, 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 is keying on at this point in time. However, that doesn't mean the fun is over. As you can tell from that timeframe, 2014 to 2021, we're getting pretty close to 2021. So as we're speaking here, the state has released, the state comes up with the growth that they think is going to happen in the state, and then they, they have the state cut up into pieces of pie, and they, and they say every piece of pie gets a certain number of units. And our piece of pie is called SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, and it's a very large area, Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange County, Los Angeles County. So it's a lot of cities. I think there's 190-some-odd cities in that. So SCAG's, uh, enviable role is to take those, that number that's given to them by the state and divide it up among those 190-some-odd cities, and so that everybody's happy. And of course, nobody's happy when you divide up housing units that you, you are expecting them to show zoning capacity for. So we don't know what that number will be. Uh, HC, or I'm sorry, SCAG has said that they plan on releasing or approving that number sometime next fall, so about a year from now, they'll be giving us a number. And when they give us the number, our job will be to show how in our zoning, we can have the capacity for that number of units. In my, in my tenure here, probably the most we've ever had actually in the history of West Covina was about two cycles ago, which was 2,400 units. So at that point in time, we needed to show zoning capacity for 2,400 units. And that may not sound like a lot, but, um, the, the general plan right now is 2,100 units. So we, we show capacity for 2,100 units right now. So anything over 2,100 units, we're going to have to figure out other ways than what we have now to show that zoning capacity, which may mean changing zoning, it may mean allowing mixed use or residential in other commercial areas besides the downtown, for instance, uh, Eastland Center, North Azusa, Lindora Avenue, Sunset. All those are actually in the general plan right now that say that those can, should be looked at, but we haven't done any zoning on those. So that is, I think, what I wanted to get across to you tonight, and obviously I'll open it up for any questions that, that I, there's many questions I can't answer at this point in time. It'll become a lot clearer in the next year, but right now, that's what we know.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, um, I, I did ask for this, um, this study session item, and, um, I did have something of a rudimentary, you know, understanding of how, um, the allocation of, of units that are required to be, for showing capacity in, in the housing element. What I really am not, um, clear on is the process by which SCAG, when it gets the allocation and has to parse it amongst the jurisdictions throughout the SCAG planning region, uh, is how that happens. And, and how a body like ours as a city planning commission, um, can have any kind of, of, advisory role in handing up to our city council and to any of the decision-makers that ultimately make that decision on, on the, on the allocation of, of the required capacity that each city gets. The governing board, as I understand, of SCAG is the body that ultimately adopts, um, adopts those numbers. So... So what what in your estimation is something that we might want to follow in the course of the development of those numbers until the point that SCAG does adopt them next fall where we can, because I would assume, you know, and at least from my own personal opinion, that because it just stands to reason that we don't want to see a number that exceeds what we show as our capacity in our housing element. Otherwise, we're going to have to find ways to play games with how other areas are rezoned and, you know, it stands a risk of 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 various types of housing development creeping outward and inward into into areas where we don't want to see our community change. We want to preserve and so that we can, for as long as we can, you know, preserve the nature of our community. And it seems that there's, you know, if there's a way that that those numbers can find their ways into other areas where it makes more sense, in Riverside County or San Bernardino County or so forth, you know, there's, you know, there's the the policies, you know, just a bit fearful of the policies that people might employ to say that even in areas that are presumably built out, you have you have more capacity than you say you do. And that kind of scares me.
And it probably should, yes. I don't I don't disagree with you there. What they are developing methodologies. So they have methodologies, they're looking at at least three of them that I've seen and there may be some more, where they they're determining what how they're going to do that calculation. So I believe it's 192 cities. We have one 192 fraction of ability to make a change in that. One, so that that I think that that has to sink in. I mean, I'm not saying that there can't be things that can be done, but it's very difficult. I was in the position 15 years ago where we didn't like the number we gave, we appealed it. I went to the board meeting, they listened to me, they said thank you and they approved it. And we went to the next guy who appealed it, they listened to them and they approved what was recommended. And and I heard from a recently retired community development director who's been in this business, was in the business for like 40 years. He said in his memory, only one appeal had ever been accepted by SCAG. So in other words, when they come up with a methodology, they're going to follow the methodology because it's a zero sum game. So let's say we get 600 units and we want 400. So we want to get rid of 200. Where are they going to go?
The 200 have to go somewhere.
They have to go and and as you're saying, I think that you can understand that there of those 192 cities, there's very few of those cities that really want that. You know, you got them on the fringe, they're probably are okay with with numbers, but everybody else is just like us, from here on to LA and all of Orange County, they have the same situation that we do. So they're also going to be saying the same type of things. So it is a very difficult situation. Also, there is different philosophies that go on. There are, there is a, there is a thought that part of the problem with the part, many of the problems that are Southern California experiences is because we keep pushing new housing to the fringes, which now are, what, 70 miles away from downtown to Los Angeles? Well, where are those, if they're working in down, that, you know, traffic is caused because somebody works 70 miles away from where they live. So that that's part of the discussion too. You have the goal line coming in, you have you have people thinking, well, if you're going to have a goal, a train, you should build units around the train station. So all those things are 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 good points and things to keep in mind. I think that that there are some things that are happening. I was going to say tricks up our sleeves, but I don't think they're tricks. And there's things that are happening with 2,100 units when we did that. We did the downtown plan, we did the the general plan, we looked at capacity everywhere. You know, who we didn't talk to at the time was the mall because the mall wasn't ready to talk to us about what they were going to do. But they're talking to us now and they're talking about adding units. So whatever the mall proposes adds on to that 2,100. So we do have some tricks up our sleeve that can increase that number. And we may even have some others that allow us to increase it in the downtown area without going to to another area. Plus, we do have a couple, it's not going to add much, we do have a couple of school sites and things that are likely to be looked at for residential development in the next year or two by themselves. So those things will probably be helpful in that regard. You know, the the bigger issues that, or I should say the bigger, another issue that I didn't really refer to here is that the RENA numbers are also by affordability category. So while this is the first time I can remember in a cycle that we're probably going to meet the cumulative number of RENA that we were assigned, the 831, we haven't, there hasn't been one affordable unit constructed in this city in 10 years. So we not meeting that. I don't know what the state's going to try to do in those regard, but that's another element in this as well. So there's a lot to lose sleep over, but I would recommend not doing that necessarily right now because I think there are some methods around it without sort of destroying the fabric of of West Covina.
Yeah, I also wonder whether or not there is common cause amongst our neighboring cities because of the very similar nature of our communities in terms of the, you know, the proportion of single-family homes and the and the multifamily units and the and the commercial centers. There's a lot of, there's a lot of similarity that we share with a lot of our neighboring cities. And through and through that common cause, do we have a case to make with SCAG on on how, you know, those RENA numbers aren't going to, you know, burst the bubble, you know, for any and all of us?
Well, I would tell you this, the there's a subregion of SCAG that's called the San Gabriel Valley Association of Governments, and they have a planners' group that meets, a planners' directors' group that meets monthly. We met, I guess, just last month, it was in August, and SCAG presented the this housing elements, the RENA numbers, not RENA numbers, the RENA process at that. And that was the most well-attended one of those meetings I've I've been to in years. There was, there wasn't even, we had to get extra seats because there wasn't enough seats in the room for everyone to be there. So there is a lot of interest among cities. And so we, and that group allows us to work together to some extent, but keep in mind, it's a zero-sum game, so I think that that's that's it. It's a zero-sum game. And and SCAG isn't necessarily happy to be in this situation. Also, keep in mind, you, I think you all recognize with other things that are pushed by the state, that the state is really wanting to take hold of this housing crisis in a way that I've never witnessed before. And some of the things that they're doing that, to me, are astounding.
In my mind, just, you know, in my mind, it really comes down to the state, when they, in doing so, taking away our local control. It's, 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 you know, a really heavy hand. If there's one area where the state's going to play a really, really heavy hand, it's in with local control, it's in this issue.
I agree with you. I agree with you. I would encourage you to write to your assemblymen and senators if you, the things that you're seeing that are happening that way, but this process has sort of already been set free and we'll have to see how it all works out in the next year.
I also want to add, which it's quite an interesting topic, regarding housing, and we have to deal with our population growth in California. I feel like people keep coming, then what do we do with the housing issues? And if you don't want the housings to continue, then either one, we need to ask people not to come, which that's not an option. So the question come in is if a population keep increasing, where do we house all these? That's part of the reason maybe prices keep driving up, so that you mentioned earlier, it's not affordable anymore. Like West Covina, it's all built out. We don't have any more land. So in a couple of years, where are we going to get the extra land to build any units? The only way is we have to also entertain as planning commissioners, which is we have to deal with land use. How are we going to deal with our land use, whether it's residential, commercial use, or how are we going to increase this number with predetermined, filled out, built-out city? So that's something that we also, as commissioners, we don't really have the luxury of saying that, no, let's ask all the guests not to come into California. That's just not an option. So if every year or every 10 years, our California population increased by 10 million or so, that's mean 10 millions home potentially that we need to add into our city. We're unique in a sense, not really, because we're in the San Gabriel Valley, that cities are being built out and we're one of among many that are being built out. So we may not be comfortable sitting here, but we also have to entertain the fact that we may have to go up, meaning that some area along the freeway area, I'm seeing more and more, even not along the freeway area, along, you know, heavy traffic area, that they allow garages be on the first floor, living room and kitchen on the second, and then they go up a third floor, which our city hasn't entertained yet. And I I've seen them throughout our city that they build these because everyone drive, whether you like it or not, but you don't have transportation that's built out that we can take a train to go somewhere. Even if we can take a train to go to downtown, then we still need a car to go somewhere. So it's not that convenient. Our transportation is not as convenient. So we somehow need to entertain different type of building versus the traditional one that we have, which is garage, you need a lot of land to build like that, with garages, living, and then the second story. We're not even entertaining going up to the second story, little less three stories, garages on the first floor and then, you know, kitchens and living on the second and then third is bedroom. So some of the cities that I've seen that are building, they had already entertained that and we have not. We're still stuck in the difficulty of having and allowing second stories. So with this housing element and keep pushing in terms of population, keep pushing and keep growing, we somehow, as planning commissioners, since we're dealing with land use, we also need to entertain how we're going to do that. There's only so much, like you were saying, regarding downtown and what have you, there's only so much land that we can increase in terms of, you know, packing of all the units in the commercial area. But it's going to get to a point that we're not going to be able to do that anymore. I'm not sure, I don't have an answer, but that's something that I think as planning commissioners and as dealing with land use, we also need to entertain how and what other people are doing is to help this particular number. And and it's growing, it's not stopping. I thought California is, people moving out, but didn't seem that way every time we have a census count.
I'd like to follow up with that and to, to, to a great degree, disagree with a lot of it. And and the reason is, is that there are more factors involved than just whether or not traffic gets gets worse, whether, you know, whether or not people have access to transit. There's, there's so many other things that are going on that are going to determine the outcome of how, you know, we build up, do or do not build up housing stock, you know, in our city, just because the state says we have to. And and one example is the nature of our economy. You know, traditional jobs, the way they used to, people used to work, is very different now than it was 40 years ago, and it's going to keep changing. I myself, I I work from home. I work from home most of the time. Occasionally, I have to work for a client where they want me to be there and, but nonetheless, you know, it's, I still don't have to, you know, don't have a commute involved. And a lot of businesses are like that. There, you know, there's, the nature of technology is making things different for the way we work. It also, technology is making different the way we travel. Yes, people do drive their cars mostly, but, you know, it wasn't until technology made it possible to have the ideas of of car sharing through services like Lyft and Uber, Uber, which revolutionized travel. And that, and so stuff like that is something that we can't factor into how we, you know, come up with the needs for housing stock. You know, this is why, you know, and this is, and it's for reasons like this, and there's probably many others, why I think we should not give in to state mandates saying, you need to provide this amount of this kind of housing, this kind of housing stock, this, these numbers, this type in these areas at this price, and and just roll over and say, okay, go ahead, transform our community, you know, it's, you know, the city will never be the same again. Once you, once you give into that, the city's going to change, it's going to be transformed, fundamentally transformed, and the city will, it'll, you can't go back. It'll never be the same again. And that's, that's, that's kind of my concern about, you know, knowing with seeing that what's coming next year, you know, what's going to happen when they, and what's going to happen if, you know, they they drop a number on us that's greater than what we have capacity for now in our housing element? What do we do then? That's, that's really, that really scares me about what's going to hap, could happen to our city. And and we're not being given the tools, you know, we're not being given the tools to deal with it in terms of the transit issue. We had an opportunity with the widening of the freeway to have, you know, if someone could have thought about about it back then, of how to create, you know, a transit connection directly, you know, on the freeway with Silver Street to go downtown or in other services. But no, it was just, it was just about the express lanes. And so in conjunction with that, we're going to have the state saying, you need to provide these number of units, you know, of this type, multifamily, higher density, but we're not going to, you know, but the planning wasn't, the transportation planning wasn't done, you know, to link that density with access to that kind of service. So so now we just have a wider freeway and that's it. There's all kinds of things that, you know, come into play and I I just don't think we just roll over and give into it and just say, oh, no, we just got to, we just got to build differently, we just got to build higher, we just got to, you know, before you know it, you know, every time they do this, it's going to be 3,000 more units, 4,000 more units, and it's, and suddenly, we're going to have, you know, high-rise condos dominating the center of the city. Where does it end? So I'm, I'm getting off my soapbox on that.
Well, perhaps I could, and I don't, I don't know that we need to, this is a conversation you're going to be having for a long time. We don't need to, we're not going to solve anything tonight, but part of this thing is the city looking at it and figuring out what strategies work for the city that reduce the impact to the areas that you want to protect. That that's really the question. And there's, there are planning, it's about planning and it's about saying, this is where we want growth, this is where we don't want growth. And the general plan sort of does that in some, in a large degree by saying, we want growth in the downtown, we don't want growth in the other areas, we don't want growth in the downtown. And while I agree with what Commissioner Hing is saying about three-story, we do have three-story, you guys approved three-story condos on Cameron, they're under construction right now. So there are some that will be be built in the next year, they've just started constructing them, the buildings recently. So, you know, there are ways to do that. So I think that we have some methods that that may work. The general plan looked at this. Also, keep in mind that this is an eight-year plan. So even if they give us a lot of units, they're not going to give us more the next year. It's eight years, so we won't have to deal with it again till about 2030. So even if they give us 4,000 units, you know, that doesn't mean we're going to build 4,000 units. That means we have to show zoning capacity. And and I'll get, I'll, I'll get on a soapbox here for just one second to understand some of the decisions that have to be made. Okay, so the city of West Covina has zoned areas that you can go up to 54, 20 to 54 units per acre. And, you know, say you had a, maybe an acre and a half site, you can build 30, 40 units. Well, the the landowner in that case just chose, in this particular case I'm talking about, chose not to do that and chose to propose a Chick-fil-A instead. So instead of getting 30 or 40 units, you get a Chick-fil-A. Now, someone the next day could come in and do the thing, but probably not because you just probably put that land use out of circulation for 20 to 50 years because they just built that building. So those decisions have to be made too. So what I, I, what I would say, I shouldn't say this, but whatever number they give us probably won't change the number of units that are built because there's a, there is a, there's a demand in West Covina for units. And if, and the demand- And if, and a demand, clearly, if the demand for five-story units was heavy in West Covina, because we had one built eight years ago. If that was that heavy, we'd have more than that right now. There's not a demand for that in West Covina. There's a demand for three-story units. That's why that was proposed there. And not, and not a three-story structure, three-story units that are separated like a condo like you'd normally see. So there's two things that go on there. There's the state trying to figure out how to get the zoning capacity. But there's also the, the market that says, "This is what we're going to build." And, and this is my other thing that I will say. My prediction is that during that next, during the next cycle, that 21 to 30, guess what? We're going to have a recession. And there's probably going to be three or four years when no housing units get built. So this is the way this thing works, that there, every other one, there's like, they're trying to catch up with the past, but the one they try to catch up with, usually there's a recession in. And so you, you have a lesser number of units. The next one, they provide you a lesser number of units because that's what was built the time before. So, and I do agree totally with Commissioner Hing that we have to, it is, it is incumbent upon us as, as, as people who, who have chosen to do these things to try to figure out ways to increase housing units. Because we know that our children and our children's children and those people in those age groups, they, they'll need housing as well. So we need to figure out a way, they're, they're not going to be able to, to spend a million dollars to buy a single-family house, not when they're 25 and start their first job. They need a way to, to figure out how to get into housing as well. And probably most of us, if we live in West Covina, we don't, we don't want our children to live in Adelanto or Hemet, right? We want them to live closer to us. So all those are, they're all big-ticket questions. And, and they're, they're all also statewide and they're local. So that, that would be my discussion. We will continue having these discussions. And if we get more information before next year, I'll try to bring another study session back so we can talk about that. We will be hiring a, a housing consultant that also will have some ideas that we can look at. But I, I would say, if you haven't looked at the general plan, read to the general plan a little bit. The general plan does set us up, actually, per, to me, for several decades into the future with the places where we could put housing if our backs are against the wall before we start sticking them in single-family neighborhoods.
Okay, very good. Discussion is going to continue on for generations to come. Next is Commission Reports, Comments, Miscellaneous Items. Anybody have any comments? Nope. Then let's move on. There's number six, which is the Community Development Director's report.
So we have the forthcoming and the next meeting we have on the 24th. We do have the Queen of the Valley specific plan and general plan. General plan amendment zone change. So that's a, it's a big, it's a big thing. We've been working on for almost two years now. So that, that's the only thing on that agenda. So we'll have all night to focus on that. We do, are hoping to have a code amendment ready for you on the following meeting after that. So we, we're hoping to have both those meetings with agendas. And then we have the subcommittee minutes for most of the summer that we stacked on there. And that's, that's all I have to report.
And City Council?
City Council talked about the, the appeal of the administrative use permits and determined to continue that to the meeting of October 1st.
October 1st, okay. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. So without objection, we are adjourned.